Good morning. The June 28, 2022 Board Meeting is now in order. I'm happy to welcome my fellow Board members and the public. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer. Mr. Gibbs, roll call please.
Ms. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the audience to join. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I would like to offer my fellow Board members and Dr. Mullins an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community who'd like to get us started this morning. Ms. McDougal.
So, I want to give a shout out to some people in our Student Services Department. Melanie Orland, I hope I said Orland, is that right, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Oh, good. Carrie Dixon, and of course, Dr. Jana Jenkins. They put together, if my fellow Board members haven't looked at it yet, a referral source manual for our community and our parents, and it is really, really amazing. So, community, that will be available for you, Ms. Moore. Okay, great. It just has all sorts of referral sources to help you find what you might need in the community. So, it's a great resource, and I want to thank you and your team for putting such a great referral notebook together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal.
So, just one more reminder, this week is the performance of the Summer Fine Arts Theater Workshop. You can get your tickets online to see Sister Act up at Titusville High School, Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday afternoon. Are you going to go down to Peter Pan at Oak Alley High School and hear an amazing bassoonist in the Pitt Orchestra that I happen to know? That's going to be same night, Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday afternoon. I just dropped her off, actually, a little while ago for rehearsal, so they're going to be awesome. I heard Captain Hook is one of the best, and so encourage you to get your tickets and support our students. It's going to be some amazing shows. And then I want to recognize a retiree who has served on our Superintendent's Insurance Advisory Committee for many, many years. Her name is Sharon McNichols, and some of you guys may have known her. She just, we have a retiring representative on PSYAC on that committee, and then she's aging out, she can participate in the other benefits now, so she's retiring off of her position from PSYAC. But I want to recognize her because, as she said her farewells to us this week, she told us that she has been serving almost continuously since 1991-92.
Oh, wow.
On PSYAC Committee. And that's a lot of years to be putting into something that's not just to her benefit, but for the benefit of our entire school district, all our employees, just being that kind of advisory committee. And she first started working for VPS in 1975 as an 18-year-old, and worked with us continuously for 40-something years, I can't remember exactly, 44, somewhere in there, Brockford that he would probably remember. But just wanted to thank Ms. McNichols for her service, because even after retiring, she voluntarily has sat on that council for several years now. So, just appreciate her and thank her for her work, and that's it.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Jenkins?
I just want to double down on what Ms. Campbell said about the Summer Fine Arts Program. I'm super excited to finally get to attend both of those shows, so I'll hopefully see you there, Ms. Campbell. And I actually am going to go a little personal here for this shout-out. You know, almost exactly a year ago, we unexpectedly lost my father-in-law and my family, and he was one of our best friends, the kindest human being in the world, don't cry. He was the most important person, one of the most important persons in my daughter's life. And I want to give a shout-out to our incredible superintendent, Dolly Ann Inzias, because for the past year, when things were really tough for my family and that loss hit us, he has gone out of his way to offer to help out, to bring a great day to my daughter's life, and I finally accepted last week. And him and his wife Laurel took her out on an adventure, took her out on a boat, took her on a river for the day, and it meant so much to me and my family and my daughter. And so, I just wanted everyone to know, as much as he probably didn't want me to publicly brag about him, he's an amazing superintendent, cares so deeply about our students and our staff, but he's also an amazing human being in person, and cares really deeply about every individual. So, thank you, Dr. Mullins, and thank you, Laurel, so much for taking her alabot for the day.
First off, there's a couple of people that are going to be promoted today that
I have some relationships with, and I wanted to say congratulations to that, because I may not be able to do that when it happens. I want to give you guys, I met with our, I wanted to say thank you to the individuals that are part of the Social Studies Support Team. We haven't really figured out what it is, there's a name that's floating around, but these individuals have come together to support not only the veterans of foreign wars, American legions, and all that, to streamline all of their applications that we know come in. So, many of you know that American legions give applications for essays in like, I don't know, like March, and say, hey, here's a thousand, you know, there's a thousand dollars for this, but we don't get the students to become a part of it, because it's something that they covered six months ago. So, we're going to do that, then they're also going to work with them on getting to all of the student, the social studies teachers, to let them know what projects they have ahead of time, so that they can bring that, their programs, which is like the speaking projects and all that other stuff together, into there. Then we also have the Veterans Speaking Project through Don Weaver, which everybody knows, great guy, for the last five years has been doing it. It's the second-largest project for veterans in the United States. They actually have students speak into it, so we're going to work with promoting that program, getting more veterans, and getting them into the schools. So, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was a part of that. I made some public records requests, and it was just because I was trying to do something pretty cool. Thank you, Russell, for getting those for me. I requested, first off, two things. One was every kid that will turn 18 by the day of the election, with the idea that I'm going to get that information and then try to promote them to register to vote for the next upcoming election. We talked about this before. Thank you, Russell, for getting moving on those public records requests. I also did a public records request for any kids that are between 17, 18, and have graduated, because I'm going to pen a letter that actually goes out to them, saying, hey, here are some of the career and technical apprenticeship programs that are available inside of your county. We all know that when the kids graduate, that they run off and they start going into, oh, I want to get a job at lifeguard, girls are better looking there than McDonald's, or wherever it is, but that doesn't further their career. And so, I think capturing them now and sending it to their parents is something I was going to do, and I wanted to thank, there's about seven people that have signed on to help me with that, and I wanted to just say thank you to all of them. And many of you guys know, I wasn't able to do the Dancing with the Stars because my back, or my father's back has surgery that day, right? He went into AFib, it was a whole other situation that happened, but I wasn't able to do Dancing with Stars, and Mr. Connor, who's over here, has agreed to do Dancing with Stars next year with me. So, I want to say thank you, Mr. Connor, for that. Many of you guys may not know, but Mr. Connor has a very unique place that he has on a lake called Alligator Lake, and he invited me one time to do bobbing out there, and that was the most interesting thing, to go bob out in Alligator Lake is an interesting thing. But I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Connor for agreeing to do Dancing with Stars with me next year, and I'll look forward to it. We're good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Mr. Connor, we'll throw you a lifeline. I've been in a similar situation, we're there for you. Ms. Belford, I'm going to defer the time to my presentation shortly, thank you.
I just have a couple of quick recognitions. I see that Mr. Wilson is actually not in the room this morning, but wanted to welcome Mr. Rashad Wilson to his first Board Meeting as our COO. He's, I'm told he's out in the hallway, so hopefully he can hear the recognition and welcome him officially to the team. And then, secondly, I just have to give another shout-out for our team and all of the folks that are supporting our summer programs. Everywhere I go, I continue to get feedback on how phenomenal those programs have been, how much parents appreciate them, students appreciate them, and so, I'm super excited, and hopefully this is, you know, something that will go on in summers to come for many, many years, but it really has been a phenomenal opportunity for our family. So, kudos to all of you that made that happen, Dr. Sullivan and team, we appreciate it immensely. All right, with that.
Ms. Belford, if I may, just as a tag to that next Board Meeting, July 12, I'll provide the Board and the community an update on the expanse of our summer opportunities for students. So, that'll be during the regular Board Meeting on July 12. Looking forward to it as well.
Thank you so much. All right, that is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the Board, on this morning's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one presentation, 22 consent items, five public hearing items, and four action items. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the addition of Items F-22, Gardendale Alternative Learning Center, Construction Management Services, and H-38, General Counsel Employment Agreement, and revisions to Items A-7, Administrative Staff Recommendations, D-8, Superintendent Report, and F-19, Renew the School Board's Casualty Insurance Policy.
What are the wishes of the Board? Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougal, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
We have four staff recommendation items for your consideration.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Moved to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
I would, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize two individuals who were appointed today and are with us this morning. First, I'd like to congratulate Jeanette Connor, reclassed from the position of Assistant Principal at Satellite High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Titusville High School effective July 1st. Congratulations, Ms. Connor.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, Dr. Sullivan, and the Board for this opportunity. I would like to begin by thanking my family. I have my dad and my sister here with me today. It means so much to have you guys here in this moment. Thank you for showing me that the sky is the limit and for always believing in me. I would also like to take a minute to thank the Directors of Secondary Leading and Learning. I'm not sure if Mrs. Sherry Bowman, Mrs. Lena Weibel, or Mrs. Vega are here, but I did want to say thank you personally to them. This opportunity means so very much. I would also like to take a minute to thank each of my former principals for not just believing in me, but for also mentoring me throughout the last 10 years that I've been with VPS. Mr. Tom Sawyer, Mr. Jeremy Solomon, Mr. Judd Kaminsky, Mr. Rashad Wilson, and most currently, Mr. Bobby Pruitt. Thank you, each of you, for just instilling in me all kinds of growth opportunities to prepare me for this moment, so thank you very much. And then, most currently, I would like to thank Mrs. Jenny Gonzalez for this opportunity to become the new 12-month AP at Titusville. I'm super excited to become a part of the Terrier team, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you so much.
And next, I'd like to congratulate Dr. William, or Billy Booth, more commonly known, who was reclassed from the position of Teacher at Merritt Island High School to the position of Assistant Principal at Satellite High School. Congratulations, Billy, appreciate it. Now, personal note, he is the teacher of, he is the former teacher of my own kids at Mel High who think very highly of him, so not a surprise that you are joining administrative team ranks, and I know you'll serve our kids with excellence. So, congratulations, Dr. Booth.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mullins. Thank you very much to the Board. Thank you very much to my family. My wife was not able to make it today, but I do have my daughter Kendall, who is going to be a 2027 graduate of Satellite High School, and, you know, maybe see her father there. I don't know how she feels about that. Very much want to thank Mr. Pruitt for the opportunity. I did interview from a cruise ship, which Dr. Sullivan told me I might be the first person to do that. Thank you very much to Dr. Sullivan, Mrs. Sherry Bowman, for the trust and for this tremendous opportunity. Want to give a special thanks to a few principals and administrators that I've had the pleasure of knowing and learning from, Mr. Jim Wilcoxen, Mr. Chad Kirk, Mr. James Raymer, Lori Braga, and Lynn Spadacini. Thank you all very much, and sting 'em, scorps.
Madam Chair, if I may take just a moment, and congratulations to our two new appointed administrators, but also just my own appreciation, my personal thanks to the families that surround Dr. Booth and Ms. Connor, and have been the support and the inspiration to challenge them to lead our kids in a new capacity. We commend them, but we recognize that it takes family to raise up and build up individuals to serve at increasing levels of leadership, and we appreciate you and appreciate the support you'll continue to provide them, as they will undoubtedly be given more professional growth opportunities. Personal note, back when I was coming up through those ranks, we aspiring administrators would leave the principal's office and folks would say, oh, are you in trouble? I said, no, I got PGO'd. My principal gave me a professional growth opportunity. It just means, here's a chance for you to experience something new. So, thank you for embracing those opportunities that have led you to this leadership, and we look forward to you serving your new schools.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and congratulations to all of you. Next, we are coming up on the Superintendent's Report or Presentation, as Dr. Mullins makes his way to the podium. his way to the podium.
Well, I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for the time and to share what arguably are the two most significant challenges facing, to provide an update related to arguably the two greatest challenges facing, not just Brevard Public Schools, but if we're honest, these are topics of discussion, work groups, task forces, focus groups around these challenges across the country. You cannot pick up an educational professional journal without articles, if not the cover story, around the issues related to recruitment, retention of not just teachers anymore, of all workforce, as well as the conversation I recently added to this morning around student behavior to provide the board an update of the work that's being done as we approach the new school year. But I'd like to begin taking a moment and look back before I give the board a status update of what we are currently engaged in and working on as a district in support of our schools. And that is, let's take a moment and understand what does the data tell us about our current labor crisis across the country? You can see that nationally, there were, pre-COVID, 7 million jobs vacant across the country. And today, post-COVID, if you will, approximately over 11 million jobs. In Florida, not quite as drastic of an increase, from 416,000 job openings to 650,000. Certainly ominous numbers nonetheless. Interestingly, although the national unemployment rate is 3.6%, here in Brevard, we have a 2.5% unemployment rate, more than a percentage point lower than the national average. And as you can imagine, this presents an unfavorable combination as an employer trying to fill vacant positions. Continuing to look back to where we are today, if you look at the new hires over the last three years across Brevard Public Schools, both in instructional and support positions, you can see that we have overcome some of the increasing numbers of vacant positions by filling an increasing number of those positions. I will not suggest that we have been able to fill all positions at the rate we have wanted to, even ending the school year with both instructional and many support staff vacancies. But we have, if you will, beat the odds a little bit in terms of the hill we've had to climb and the response we've been able to make. And I would suggest that that is a direct result of the recruitment, as well as the retention efforts that we have put into place over the last couple of years through the Human Resources Division, Office of Professional Learning Development, but not the least of which, the commitments that our leaders made across our schools, as well as across our departments, to create and maintain a positive work environment culture, which we know is the number one factor for employee retention. Inclusive of those efforts is increasing the number of job fairs, more than double than what we had in the past in the last 12 months. In addition, we have expanded our recruitment efforts to include paid Facebook and Instagram ads in high-populated cities and regions around the country, introducing Brevard County, as well as Brevard Public Schools, to candidates around the country, and all of the favorable opportunities we have for them as well. And in addition, we increased our presence and utilization of a very popular job recruitment website, Indeed. We had utilized it in the past, but we had not leveraged it to the full capacity that we are now in ongoing engagement with them, particularly for support positions. As I met with principals over the last couple of few weeks, they echoed their appreciation and the results that were coming from particularly support position applicants through the Indeed employment website. I'd also like to highlight our recent or newer utilization of the employment platform called CIRCA, which specifically targets minority candidates and our commitment to increase the number of minority applicants to our job openings across the district. We've also expanded our presence in local media sources like Vera Voice, Ebony Magazine, as well as we're pursuing increased presence in Aldea Today, which is our local Spanish We have specifically focused on broadening the applicant, or the broadening the pool of applicants as we follow research from our educational partners, TNTP, looking for more non-traditional paths to fill positions. Want to highlight three points on this slide. One, our growing IA program from instructional assistant to teacher. We have created a very manageable pathway from IA to classroom teacher, and in fact, we have, if you will, promoted nearly 100 IAs from their position as IA to teacher over the last two years. In addition, we have, we are one of the few, surprisingly, and that, we'll leave it that way because we don't want any more competition, one of the few school districts around the country that are partners with the Department of Defense Skill Bridge Program. And it allows us to employ a anticipated military retiree 180 days before their retirement with the school system, providing an internship as a pathway from military service to classroom service. And we have actually employed three Skill Bridge participants in the past and within our schools, and 15 additional active service members are in the process of applying to intern in our schools right now. So that has proven to be a very positive opportunity. In addition, I want to highlight the extra efforts our Human Resources Department have done in reference to the Beacon application process. It is no secret that we receive a bit of criticism over the cumbersomeness of the Beacon online application tool. And sometimes applicants will abandon the effort before they complete it. Well, that has not prevented our HR team staff to go in, look at applications that are partially completed, and they're actually making direct contact with those applicants to assist them and help them complete the process so that a logistic does not become an obstacle to becoming an applicant. This next slide begins to capture the efforts that have been put forth to elevate the culture that we are committed to creating, maintaining, and sustaining across our different workplaces. I know the board is familiar with our school-based profiles that were completed this year, published and are available both online and in print publication, and been made available to several of our community partners, where we celebrate and accentuate the, not only the accomplishments of our schools, but the great programs and opportunities across those schools, really capturing what our commitment is to our schools. But also creating brochures, and I would offer, although I haven't counted, but I'm pretty confident suggesting, we have more highlight videos of our schools across the district than we have ever had before in the history of Brevard Public Schools. Why is that important? Because schools can build those into their websites. They can build that into their own pursuits, and that two or three-minute capture of the school in living color, if you will, for candidates and community members to understand what is my local school, Jupiter Elementary School, Creole Elementary, or Satellite High School. What is this school about? What does it have to offer? And in two or three minutes, not only do they experience what's there, but they see the real people behind the programs and offering the leadership of our schools. So my thanks to Mr. Bruin, his leadership, and continuing to pursue yet a large library of video resources for our community and our partners. In addition, I mentioned earlier our utilization of CIRCA as an employment website tool. We are also, we've increased our engagement, our partnership, our presence with historically black college and universities through job fairs. We're actually currently pursuing a field trip for Bethune-Cookman students to come to our schools in the fall so that we get first dibs on those aspiring educators. So they get to see our schools, they get to engage with our kids, they get to talk with the men and women who are already serving kids, and to provide a real-life inspiration. In addition, we have a great partnership with Divine Nine, which you know are the nine prominent paternity sororities of HBCUs. ABSE is the Association of Black School Educators, and we have a local chapter here as well, led by Dr. Karen Ivory as president. And I personally meet with Brevard's APSY to remain engaged and talk about how do we increase applicants of color to the organization? And then how do we also ensure that we are being responsive to those efforts of retention? Because we want to keep our quality candidates here in the organization. Now I'd like to take a moment and talk about retention, because in the words of a wise educational leader, the best recruitment strategy is a strong retention strategy. And I know that our union leaders echo that sentiment with us. And so our professional learning and development team committed to strategies of support, connection, as well as growth. And I'll take a moment and share some of those with you now. And the arena of support, the board is very familiar with the several new health benefit opportunities available to our employees. Surgery Plus, which offers a near zero cost to employees for routine surgical procedures and provides them almost concierge healthcare service through that process. I see Mrs. Belford shaking her head because she experienced that firsthand, I believe, as her son went through a recent medical procedure. I hope you don't mind me disclosing that. But you have publicly said how positive that that experience was. I'll give a personal testament to Hinge Health. Hopefully, my wife doesn't mind me calling her out. She utilizes Hinge Health herself for some chronic long-term back challenges, and we rarely can start our day without her going online and engaging with her Hinge Health therapy. So it's been beneficial to her as well. My wonderful deputy superintendent, I won't say she's nagged, but nearly, to get me to participate in Hello Heart. I am a proud app owner of Hello Heart on my own smart device and using it to help monitor my health and take advantage of that to be a positive contributor and manager of my own personal health as it benefits the health plan for Brevard Public Schools. So all of these tools become benefits to the employees of Brevard Public Schools, and I would suggest offer effective and beneficial retention opportunities. Beyond that, we also have launched an ambitious wellness campaign over the last particularly 12 months. Poor Antonia, I give her a hard time. I said, I can't open my email anymore without receiving an update on how I can engage in managing my own personal health and wellness, and what a great problem to have. That there are lots of outlets, whether it's participating in a 300-mile walk challenge, or committing to a 5K, or taking advantage of some healthy online cooking tips. So those resources are available to our employees as well. But more practically, in the classroom, how do we come alongside our teachers as they work through the challenges and demands of instructing, teaching, inspiring, coming alongside, knowing, and building the esteem of our kids, while also helping them accomplish themselves academically so they can reach their dreams? We know that our teachers need support. They need support in the school, they need support outside of the school. So we have a host of vehicles by which our teachers, particularly our new teachers, can connect with mentors, both in the school as well at the district level. They receive a regular newsletter, they are invited to be part of roundtable discussions, as well as focus groups, and providing them that opportunity of connection with their colleagues that we know is so important, so they never feel like they're on an island by themselves, the only one experiencing the challenges to being a new teacher. Another program that I'm very excited about and really actually sent Mr. Alba, after I became more familiar with it in preparation for this, I said, how do we scale up this opportunity? Educators Thriving is a personal well-being area for teachers. It is hosted through Professional Learning and Development. We piloted it at three schools this last year. We're including three more schools. And that's where I told Mr. Alba, how do we scale it up bigger, faster, and more prevalently for all of our teachers? But through the program, participants learn concrete strategies to help them avoid and manage the most common pitfalls of the educator experience, such as being overwhelmed, personal neglect, a fixed mindset, unexpected challenges, and feelings of isolation. And between the six sessions, participants had access to online resources, activities to apply research-based strategies to their work in the classroom, as well as that engagement with colleagues throughout the school year. So we're excited about the benefits, as well as the positive response we received from the participants, and looking to expand this opportunity moving forward. In addition, we have provided tutoring opportunities. We've utilized Title II funds to reimburse teachers for critical shortage area certification exams to take that burden and weight off of them and reinforce our commitment to them as they maintain or pursue certification. Feedback is important to us as an organization. I think we've exemplified that more recently through our presentation of survey results, as well as our community, our recent community conversations, but also within the organization of our employees to ensure that our employees feel connected and have a voice in the direction that we're going as an organization. So our HR department has engaged with our employees at different levels, implementing a newer stay survey that's been conducted to capture reasons why employees choose to stay with the district. And then focus groups will occur this fall to gain a deeper insight into those responses and ensure we keep the practices that have attributed to that, and we reevaluate some of the situations or circumstances that may compromise that moving forward. Then also in the area of connection and building relationships across the district, we actually hosted several educator connection events, from a symposium and dinner to our convening that you see depicted here, as well as celebrating the end of year for first-year teachers. And what a great event where we allow first-year teachers to come together and celebrate the success of We Made It, while also being inspired by young emerging teachers of the year who provide messages of encouragement moving forward. Next, we'll see if my technical skills support me here. I think we have a short video that captures some of the experiences our employees have had.
I didn't want to sit in a stuffy office. I've really enjoyed the schedule.
I like driving these buses.
If you're the type of person who loves kids and can encourage them, you're perfect for the job.
It's a cool job for everybody.
You can't ask for a better working environment.
It's a very rewarding job. You have the opportunity in your life to make a difference. You can't get a better job.
I am a substitute teacher at West Melbourne School for Science. What I enjoy is the connection. I love connecting with kids, whether it be kindergarten or sixth grade. I love connecting with kids, whether it be kindergarten or sixth grade. It's just, to me, it inspires me, where I can see something in their eyes, and when you walk around and they're saying your name after they get to know you, that's the part that I adore the most.
The DOD Scovage Program has really helped secure my future and my career path. I'm super excited that it's in such an inclusive environment. Like I said, everyone here has really made me feel like part of the team. And this program gave me the opportunity to establish myself, introduce my work ethic, and I just, I love it. It's great. Teaching's been a lot of fun.
I feel like everyone who I have spoken with or dealt with, from, like I said, from the school board to my administration, has just been so helpful to me. I have a team that have been there every step of the way, answered every question, helped me out with my lesson plans, stayed after school with me, some even come on the weekends and help me when I'm here. And I just know teachers from other places who didn't have that kind of help or support, so that definitely just made it a better experience for me overall.
It's such a rewarding job. There's a lot of good things that come with it, and I would really urge them to go into
Just one of the many examples of our communications office, Mr. Brune, in putting together a video that captures the experience our employees are having across every possible position and really accentuating the positive culture that our leaders across the district are committed to for all of our employees. Kind of as we wrap up this part of the presentation, I want to highlight not only the recruitment, the retention, the support and connection opportunities, but also what about growth opportunities within the organization? The board is aware of our growing career ladder opportunities on our website for our employees, where they can look ahead, they can look toward, "Okay, what might be next for my professional journey within Brevard Public Schools?" And we provide additional supports and resources, whether that is help getting through a GED or taking advantage of adult ESOL courses or adult ed education courses, even within our own system. We pour into our insight survey feedback from employees, and we take their voice and their feedback and build it into our priorities moving forward. Again, the board is aware of our real deep dive into our survey results across the entire organization as an integral part of our strategic planning process just a couple weeks ago in the revised review retreat of strategic plan. We know that every single employee of Brevard Public Schools right now is a potential recruiter for Brevard Public Schools. And so I would make an appeal to all of our employees listening and who may listen later and ask that you take on the role, the challenge, if you will, to be a recruiter for Brevard Public Schools and take the opportunity to talk to friends, neighbors, those in your sphere of impact, and talk with them about being a part of Brevard Public Schools. We have enormously positive story to tell about employment opportunities here in Brevard Public Schools. And so I'd like to take now, before I address student behavior, a few minutes to talk about our current efforts toward recruitment as we move forward, right now in preparation for this school year. In reviewing feedback from our administrators, you've seen the vacancy rate we've had for the last few years, but what has become a more recent reality and quite frankly, challenge in our workforce employment certainly is the vacancy rate, but that's almost not as concerning as the new vast reduction in number of applicants. We can't fill positions that we don't have applicants for. And so in recognition of a reducing pool of candidates or applicants for the positions that we have available, we are, if you will, putting together a full-court press of recruitment over the coming weeks to fill positions as we near the start of the school year. It begins with, what do we have to recruit with? And I would suggest we've got a really favorable, good story to share. Beginning teacher salary will be at least $47,500 for the coming year. We've already negotiated, been ratified and board-approved. For a new hire teacher, they will be receiving up to a $2,400 bonus this school year, nearly approaching a guaranteed $50,000 a year salary for the beginning teacher this year. We are working toward full benefits eligible by August 1st. Currently, benefits aren't eligible until your 46th day of employment, and we are accelerating that and making benefits available as soon as we can possibly get them onboarded. We're continuing to cover all onboard costs for employees. Teachers who pursue teaching at a Title I school have enormously favorable opportunity for student loan forgiveness through the federal student loan forgiveness program. And let's not forget that it is a 10-month work calendar with four weeks guaranteed off throughout that year, a week at Thanksgiving, yes, that week is now built into our calendar after we had such a positive experience with it last year, two weeks at winter break, and then the additional spring break as well. In addition, we have additional days to pre-planning this year built in for training, professional development, introduction to our new math curriculum, as well as English Language Arts and Math at Secondary, so teachers can receive hourly rate of pay for anywhere from two to four additional workdays before the school year starts. And for support staff, let me loudly and clearly testify, every position in Brevard Public Schools will have no less than a $15 an hour rate of pay effective July 1st. Now that comes with a caveat. I'm feeling my friend across the room there, Dr. Thetty, reminding me, "Make sure you give the caveat." The state has only required that implementation by October 1st. We have made the organizational decision to put it into place by, excuse me, July 1st, but we will need time to implement that very manual, laborious process of payroll changes and will not potentially be implemented until October 1st, but will be retro to the first day of employment up to July 1st. That is inclusive. That includes our current existing employees. There have been several questions around, we know that the beginning salary is going up to 15, but does that include me if I'm already onboard? And the answer is yes, it does. We are anticipating going back to the negotiation table with our 10-10 union leaders as we continue to work through that process, but that much, we are guaranteed, everything that I have just said. Again, benefits eligible August 1st, onboarding costs paid for, and I've already referenced the advancement opportunities through the career ladders. For our bus drivers particularly, paid training while they obtain the certification of a CDL license, the CDL test is paid for, full benefits by August 1st, and a flexible work schedule for our bus drivers. I have highlighted and intentionally spotlighted three particular positions that we are prioritizing and focused on here in the coming weeks, and that is the teacher, the position of teacher, instructional assistant, and bus driver. Those are the direct student contact positions that we have across the organization. Please, don't let me suggest that every position in this organization is critical to the support and development of our kids, but we are prioritizing and focusing on those direct student-related positions right now and really raising the touch of how we're communicating that. So you're probably asking, "Okay, well, we've got a great story, but how are we getting this story out in different ways than we have done in the past?" Mr. Brune and his department is preparing for social media, radio, TV, paid advertising of our employment opportunities. In addition, he's developing a printed flyer highlighting all of those things and more that I've just spoken to. I will have that ready here by Thursday, because on Thursday, I have already scheduled three district-wide regional conversations with our faith-based partners in education and my faith-based ambassadors in education. We have well over 125 faith-based leaders that are part of those two vehicles. I met with my principals this morning, and I challenged them, in addition to those that I have on my distribution list, "Are there other pastors that are connected with you, perhaps even your own personal, that you want at this conversation? Give them my contact information, and we'll make sure they have an invitation." And at this meeting I have with them on Thursday, I'll be making a very specific and explicit ask, and that is to commit three to five minutes from the pulpit on the next two Sundays at your church, your synagogue, your temple, place of worship, highlighting the employment opportunities and the favorable story we have to share across our community. Because we've got workforce solutions right here in our front and backyards of Brevard County, and people who have a vested interest, not only in our community, but would have a vested interest in our kids. And ask them to make those opportunities available and provide them as many flyers as they think they may need to help us get the word out. In addition, we are putting out a press release about our hourly rate of pay for all employees, as well as sending an individual letter to every 10-10 employee current, making sure that they understand that if they are below $15 an hour now, it will be going to 15 effective July 1. We're powering up fingerprinting and HR assistance, both increased hours as well as those follow-up calls that I've alluded to already. And we will follow up. In addition, I made contact with Eastern Florida State College, and I have to give shout-outs and props to Dr. Michael Cador. Been a longtime colleague, quite frankly, friend, partner in education, committed to this community. I called Mike and I said, "Mike, I need your help. I need in quick fashion who your graduates were in May, and if you know who your graduates are in August, can I get a data list, a list of all of those graduates, both associates of arts as well bachelor's degree-earning students?" Because here's what I want to do. I want to do you a favor and hopefully do me a favor. One, I want to contact them directly and let them know about the very positive, favorable employment opportunities here in Brevard Public Schools across different positions. How does it help you? Well, you can bolster great career opportunities from classroom to workplace through a degree in Eastern Florida State College as we reach out to them. And he said, "That's a no-brainer. Let me see what I can..." I said, "Mike, I need quick turnaround time. I need it by Wednesday of this week." Mike had it to us yesterday. And so I got to give shout-outs to Mike. It's a comprehensive list with contact information, and we are in the process right now of reaching out to them, both in mail and by phone, to make these opportunities available to our students. I also challenged my principals this morning. Right now is the time to take a moment and pause. Your teachers have been gone for half the summer, and to remind them of the valuable impact that they have in students' lives. And that not only are you looking forward to a great year, you're looking forward to that teacher coming back and ensuring that every student is known, valued, and inspired, and making sure that they're aware of the compensation agreements we've already made with returning teachers. Teachers in their one to seven years will be receiving a $3,400 bonus distributed throughout the school year. And teachers in their eighth-plus year would be receiving a bonus of $4,400 distributed across the year. And in addition, taking a specific look of which of your teachers entered their 11th year of service or completed their 11th year, and make sure they know that they're eligible, they're now eligible for the $1,200 longevity supplement that is not only recurring, but retirement-eligible. And so our principals are doing that work right now to connect with their teachers, to ensure that we are taking advantage of those retention strategies and opportunities and making sure our teachers are connected to their schools and to the kids that they have served and we want them to continue to serve. So now, and I know this is a bit of a more lengthy presentation, but I hope you agree that as these are the biggest challenges we face, it's important that the board know, understand that I and my team are committed to these priorities for our community and for our kids, and trust it to provide some assurance. So I want to transition here. I began conversation around this topic of student behavior with our employees several weeks ago, actually, even before the end of the school year. As you know, I meet with teachers of the year and employee of the year ambassadors, as well as my community leader ambassadors. And one of the topics that could not be included in our conversation as a growing national rhetoric was student behavior. What are you experiencing? What do I need to know, and what do we need to be thinking about? And so those conversations began toward the end of the school year, and then shortly after the school year, the week of June 6th, I had that same conversation specifically with principals across all levels. And so the feedback that I received already ultimately echoes much of what we've heard at a national level. Students are struggling with self-regulation, having come out of two years of trauma. And sometimes, and it's beyond just the uncertainties and inconsistencies that came with COVID, because let's not forget, life didn't give us any other breaks in the midst of managing a worldwide pandemic. Life tragedies of family loss, financial insecurity, not the least of which sometimes can include neglect and abuse. And so our students, our young ones, as much as we have hailed them as resilient, probably have not been as resilient as we would have wanted them to be, given everything that they faced. And so the feedback I received is, "Their behavior is at higher levels, inappropriate behavior than we've experienced before." Particularly in those moments of transition, when we think of students who go from sixth to seventh grade, that is a significant period of transition. From eighth grade to ninth grade, that's another significant period of transition in the midst of all of the other uncertainties and inconsistencies. But interestingly, what I also heard from educators was, "It's not just those pivotal moments of transition, it's the micro-moments of transition throughout the day that we see the greatest departure from positive self-regulation." Class change, teacher change, moving from classroom to cafeteria, moving from media to art. And if we pause, are we that surprised? As we experienced and had to manage some significant staff inconsistencies as well, our kids had to experience more teacher transitions, particularly this last year than they've had to in the past. That's one of the very detrimental implications of workforce shortage. And to take nothing away from our teachers, they did a valiant job of standing in the gap and helping us get through the challenges. But what we also heard is the reinforcement that clear, explicit communication of expectations, utilizing common vocabulary are critical as our kids have experienced all of this trauma in their lives. I had shared recently by Ms. Moore, and she heard it put this way, and I hadn't read this, but I think it'll resonate with you. Research identifies that a person, a child, a brain that has experienced trauma craves pattern, predictability, and certainty to break the negative impact of trauma. It makes sense. What triggers and fosters dysregulation? Discontinuity, adjustment, uncertainty, inconsistency, particularly in our kids as they're developing and learning to manage life's normal... and learning to manage life's normal uncertainties, not even the heightened levels of uncertainty. So then began the process of how do we respond? How do we begin taking steps to say, "Okay, we recognize some of the challenges. How do we begin putting things in place?" I would suggest, and I make this appeal right now publicly and explicitly and intentionally, that it is going to require all that. We experienced the uncertainty, the inconsistency as a community. No one was immune from the impacts, the realities of COVID, and all of the adjustments that were necessary. And so we have got to come together and work together as a community for our kids, for their success. You've heard me mention, at least a couple times, the new mentoring framework that has been recently developed. We are prepared and ready to launch that availability to our community. And to our community, I say, "Do you care about kids? Whether you have one in our schools or not? I've yet to find someone who doesn't." And say, "Then let's commit to mentoring a young life." We have kids right now in every one of our schools who need a consistent, meaningful adult relationship with some in their life, not just to check in on them and make sure they got lunch money, but to check in on them and help them aspire to goals that they set for themselves in conversation and discussion with a mentor. Goals towards academic success, goals toward behavioral success, goals towards aspiring to accomplish something in their future, and help that young person stay focused on that. In addition, we need our parents. We need our parents to come alongside us, partner with their child and their school to ensure their ongoing success. But we've heard from parents, I've heard from our parents, our parent leadership team have said, "We need more help and support, particularly in areas of mental health and academic supports. We are currently developing and will be launching this fall an ambitious parent academy opportunity across multiple platforms, regions, in-person, online, Zoom, that address things like proactive social media engagement and monitoring with your child, reinforcing positive self-regulation strategies, understanding that common language we use in our schools that you can reinforce in the home." We have parents who want to become youth mental health first aid completers. Love that. That is a state initiative where all of our employees have to be trained in youth mental health first aid, I think by 2020, the end of 2023. Understanding the signs and triggers for social-emotional stress, both in students and adults, homework help and homework structures for support, focus, our tool for engaging with a child, their academic progress, and using that tool to elevate engagement and provide to support, as well as identifying the signs of vaping and drug use in your child. We are digging into the data, and I will tell the board and our community, we need to be concerned. The vaping, tobacco use of our youth, all the way down into our elementary schools, has never been higher. It's a concern. We've got to first be aware, and then we've got to educate ourselves, and we've all got to work together, help our kids understand the dangers and the health risks that they put themselves in with that type of behavior. What's next for our schools? We hosted conscious discipline training across the state, actually, multiple states last week. We are seeing the positive results, both quantitatively and qualitatively, with conscious discipline. It became a prominent topic of conversation in my principal meetings. I had two questions. I said, "Number one, I'll share with you in a moment. We've had anchor schools for conscious discipline." I said, "Number one, do you have at least pockets, classrooms where quality implementation of the strategies of conscious discipline are evident?" And they said, "Yes." My next question, it's one thing that you've got quality implementation. What I really am interested in, when you have quality implementation, are you getting positive results? And unequivocally, the response was yes. So I'll take some time in a moment to talk about what is conscious discipline and why is it effective in a moment, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about it. But also, positive behavior intervention support, PBIS, we know is effective both at the elementary and the secondary level. Sources of strength as a suicide prevention program, student-led but teacher-facilitated, has been enormously positive in our schools. At the secondary level, we'll be looking for the best classroom structure to implement. Conscious discipline is a classroom structure at the elementary level. We have not definitively identified that classroom structure for secondary. That's part of the conversations I'll be engaging in moving forward. But additionally, at the district level, we have administrator training at the end of July that dives into our discipline plan to ensure that there is consistent utilization and pursuit of fair, firm discipline and consistent utilization of consequences. While we also know that dysregulated behavior, inappropriate behavior only followed up with a consequence is never going to be as mitigating as the path of inappropriate behavior consequence with coaching, with training, with conversation around, "Okay, now let's go back and understand how you could have positively reacted and responded to the situation you found yourself in that led to the negative behavior." And so we'll be having those conversations with our administrators in the coming weeks as well. In addition, I've challenged Ms. Moore and her team, a little bit of buzz going on, but to scale up conscious discipline for all elementary schools in the next two years. So let's take a moment and talk about conscious discipline. It's a framework that I want you to take away as developmentally appropriate, but I can't say it any better than that second statement. All aspects of conscious discipline focus on creating a safe, connected environment for children to learn and practice the skills needed for healthy social, emotional, and academic development. That's what we all want for every one of our kids. Conscious discipline focuses on four brain-smart areas. I wish this were numbered, but if you top left, unite, bringing kids together and uniting as a class and as a group. Two, disengaging with the stress, the factors that may have come in with them. I often call them the invisible things in the backpack that come with the kid to the school. But helping a kid identify that they may be feeling stress and help them work through breathing techniques, stretching, and releasing the stress that they came with into the classroom so that they can focus on the lessons ahead. Connecting, connecting to students, connecting the students to the teacher and each other helps create and maintain a community of shared learning and motivation to learn. And finally, commit. This is a strategy where the teacher reminds students that they're a safe keeper and literally says, "It's my job to keep you safe." Talk through the how, and then students respond and share, "It's our job to help you keep us safe." So a shared community in that classroom. We have, I mentioned, we have launched what are called anchor sites. Last year, we had eight schools. This year, we've already identified six schools who will become anchor sites. That is a comprehensive implementation of conscious discipline that includes training this summer, as well as coaching, where district staff go in and come alongside the school as they do professional development, but also support teachers as they implement the strategies of conscious discipline. Here, I've captured some of the feedback we've received from principals in relation to their experiences with conscious discipline. I'll give you a moment to take one and just read the feedback that's been provided. And then I'll share some of the feedback we've received, actually, from teachers, several items there. Select a box and read the feedback that we've received. And I'll also add that the data indicates quantitatively that those classrooms and schools that have implemented conscious discipline equality are experiencing reduced inappropriate behaviors than those classrooms and schools that aren't. Part of why we know this is the right and effective pursuit for all of our schools. So next steps. I'm not going to suggest we've captured all of what needs to be done, should be done, or may need to be done moving forward, because there is one thing certain in life, and that is tomorrow is uncertain. So I am prioritizing ongoing stakeholder engagement and feedback conversations to begin the week of July 11th, and will include teachers, again, more in an elementary discussion group and secondary discussion group, because my first conversations realize that it's a bit of a different conversation at the elementary and secondary level. Continuing to engage with administrators, both in elementary and secondary. Student services, they're an integral part of this conversation, and I want to connect directly with our students or services professionals as they provide a tremendous amount of support and get their feedback and input. I already referenced our parent leadership team members, be reaching out to some of our parents who have been engaged with us through PLT over the last several months, as well as, once school starts, I will reengage with my student government leaders, as well as middle school and sixth-grade representatives around this conversation of student behavior. What do we need to know? How do we need to respond? And how do we affirm you as our priority in this organization? And I anticipate providing the school board an update late July, August, of where those conversations are leading and any changes or additions to the efforts and the actions that I've already described. Lastly, I want to provide the board and a community just a highlight of what will be my focus for our leaders when we come together on July 19th for the Superintendent Summit. I recently was introduced to this leadership book. It's been around for about 10 years, titled Lead Simply: How to Create That Special Team of People. It is not education-leadership-oriented. It is general leadership-focused, but is built on three principles that I suspect will resonate with you. One, model, the behavior you want to see in the people that you lead. Two, connect with the people that you lead. And three, involve them as much as possible. And I challenged my leaders this morning. Model begins with modeling the attitude that you want to see reflected in those that you lead across your school. Begins with you. And two, it includes modeling the instructional practices that we want to see inside our classrooms for the benefit of our kids, which means you're going to have to connect with more people across your campus, more individuals in your school, because you can't be in every classroom and be that model for every person. And you're not always the best person to model instructional practice, but you know the people who are. You've got to connect and inspire them to take on that role. And if there's anything we've learned about the two challenges I've talked about this morning, is not one of us can accomplish, overcome that challenge by ourself, by our own leadership. We have to involve the extended community. We've got to reach out to our extended educators and say, "I need you to be part of, I need to involve you in this conversation, and the actions we need to take as a school to build the culture, maintain and sustain the culture we need for our kids and for each other." And that includes parents, includes our community. And so that will be the focused message of my conversation, my charge, if you will, to our leadership going into next school year, as we tackle the challenges ahead, for no more worthy cause than our kids and their future. With that, I send my appreciation to the board for your allowance of the time. I trust you found the information beneficial, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members have questions? Ms. Campbell?
First of all, thank you to you and your team. This is a lot of work and a lot of intentionality and some really big issues that I know are not unique to Brevard, but this is our sphere of influence, and so I appreciate that. Actually, I want to start with the end. The three things you mentioned from the book, the model, connect, involve, sounds like good classroom instructional strategy, right? Modeling what you're trying to teach and then connecting that with students and then involving them as much as possible in their own learning. So I love that.
Amen. Great, great translation.
I want to go back to the retention and recruitment efforts. As you were talking, you had a Children's Hunger Project logo on one of those, and because I serve on that board, something came to mind, it's very practical, that I think we might be able to do. I know one of the grants that that organization has been trying to get involved in requires them to, they're asking them if they provide resources to the families that they provide the meals to. And I know to put in the bags for us to hand out, I was like, you know, we have to go through the district office for any materials that you might pass out. But if it's materials from the district, then, you know, if we're connecting families who have a need with potential job opportunities, I think that might be a good resource. So I'd encourage, if you guys could reach out to Cheryl Kaminsky and touch base with her, are the job opportunities, the new flyers coming, is that something that they can stick in the meal packs as they, I mean, they won't go out until school starts, but then I actually may back up, because we're doing summer feed and read right now. So any student who's involved in the United Way programs, summer feed and read programs, they actually could get that information out to them this summer, because they have ongoing summer feeding programs. So just wanted to throw that out.
Love it. Thank you.
As we look at, you know, one of the priority employee groups, the teachers in particular, I just wondered, what is, because, you know, a lot of times people get, "Oh, I don't have an education degree," you know, or, you know, they find themselves like myself, you know, haven't taught in years, all my teaching certificates in the places where I have had them have expired, or we have a ton of people who are moving in from out of state. What does the path to the classroom look like for someone like that who maybe hasn't taught in many years, and so they don't have current certification? What does that look like for them who might say, "Okay, I'm ready to go back into the classroom now"?
Yeah, great question. I literally say everywhere I go, "If you hold a four-year degree, there is virtually a pathway to being a classroom teacher for you that we will partner with you to do." And you don't have to wait to do it. You can start teaching, earning a full-time salary, and we partner with you to get your certification, to get all of the credentials that you may need if you are a non-formally college of education degree holder, or you are a former educator certified in another state, but it's lapsed and that type of thing. Our recruitment-retention office literally walks that out one-on-one with any candidate and helps them navigate that pathway. Let me reiterate, virtually any four-year degree-holding individual, and even some not-four-year-degree holding individuals, particularly for positions in career and technical education, because we have found some very creative, I'll say, pathways for individuals who don't currently hold a four-year degree, but in career and tech ed, their experience can meet some of those qualifications. Don't let your belief or sense that you don't meet the qualifications prevent you from reaching out to us and talking. There are so many potential pathways, whether you're a former teacher, you need to get your credentials here in Florida. People don't realize, we have reciprocate.
Reciprocity.
That word. I've used my word limit today, so, but we walk that out with folks every single day all the time, and we are absolutely committed to doing that with any candidate individual.
And that was, my second question was, what if they don't have a degree at all? Or not a degree at all, but don't have an education degree, but they have a bachelor's and others. So thank you for addressing that. And I know that's something we've done in the past. I just, you know, thank you for addressing that. I want to know, how fast, you know, can we get those people? And there's some principals, one of my principals at one of the high schools where I serve in particular, happens to be really fantastic at recruiting people who hadn't even thought about being a teacher before, but maybe they were working as a sub, and he was like, "Hey, I've got a job for you." And it's just great at walking through. Dr. Harris is really great at walking people. Dr. Harris is really great at walking people through that process and developing a new career for many, so appreciate that we're doing that and we're moving them through quickly. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm not really going to address the recruitment and retention, I feel like us as an organization, as well as our community, is well aware that that is a five-alarm fire, and is a priority and a focus, because we cannot function and we cannot educate our students if we don't have educators, staffers, support them to do it. But I do just kind of want to just expand on the conscious discipline. I appreciate you going into detail a little bit about what it is, because, you know, unfortunately it's become a little bit a part of the cultural conversation, but I just want to highlight as well, this isn't something that's new to Brevard Public Schools, this is something we've been using for years, we've been using it in our pre-Ks, we've been using it in our elementary schools, it's just kind of growing and expanding because we've seen the benefits of it, and it's a program that's not only used in Brevard Public Schools, it's used across the state and across the nation. And just a little fun fact, the author, Becky Bailey, well, actually, I don't know if she's a resident of Central Florida anymore, but she was a resident of Central Florida, and I actually think she was from Brevard at some point, which is, you know, pretty cool, rooted here. But one other thing to focus on is, this isn't necessarily a behavioral tool for children, it's really intended for the adults. It's to kind of change the mindset of an adult to figure out how to self-regulate themselves and how to intervene with that child's behavior in a positive way. And I've spoken to, as a speech therapist, many parents who've utilized this program and tool just as a parent and communicating with their kids, and, you know, once the adult works through this framework and changes their behavior, it naturally makes it easier for them to address the behavioral concerns of the children in their lives or in their classroom. So, it's a really, really awesome tool, but really, it's just changing that thought process, and I appreciate the way that you highlighted it there, because I think it has been made to be this boogeyman and this crazy program, when in reality, it's just a really smart way to think about stuff and just kind of change your mindset, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anybody else?
Yeah, 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 I was going to wait. Thank you, Dr. Mullins, some of the things, and Russell, thank you for all those videos, thank you for everything that you've done. You're right, Dr. Mullins, telling the story of the community to each one of the schools is important, plus it's a sense of pride for the teachers to be able to see that. Community needs to know what those schools are doing, and Russell and his communications team have done amazing. I was looking at everything that you guys have done, and to be honest with you, I would challenge another district to be doing as much as you're doing. So, I wanted to give you guys all the credit in the world for everything that you guys are doing. One of the problems that we run into with retention and recruitment is that there are so many things that we can be doing, and you just can't do all of them. So, everybody's going to sit there and say, well, you didn't do this, right? And, but literally, like, I would press to see videos in schools and meeting with Eastern Florida State College, these are amazing things that our district's doing, so I wanted to say thank you for all of that. Couple of things that I was thinking about, to throw on the bout, on the, on the table here, since we're all here, one of the things that I ran into, and these are just some suggestions, Dr. Mullins, and you can take them if you want, but we have this amazing thing that was developed years ago for career fairs for applicants who have their degrees and are ready to come over, and our principals go in and give binders. One of the things we could do is, there's many people that were in the community that were trying to gain access to that career fair, but because they weren't invited and they didn't have the process, proper process, they weren't allowed to get in there, and that's rightfully so, because we're giving out binders, we don't want somebody we don't know coming in that wasn't part of the application. But I really feel there's a massive amount, and we had spoken about this, of parents who stay at home with their children and then just continue to stay at home, but were former teachers. And I think that if we were able to target them, and part of it's not go to Beacon and fill it out, but let's have a career fair for all the individuals that maybe want to come back, meet our principals, talk to them, there might be an opportunity there, some sort of a summit or whatever it is to call them. And we were talking, Dr. Mullins and I were talking, and there are data points inside of our systems that we can make public records requests to other entities to find out who is inside the FRS for educators, so we can identify all of them. It's not like we have to just kind of look for them, we can make a public records request, I have the data too, to a degree, but the thing is, is that we can identify who is teachers that are under the age of 55 that might be targets for us, and then we can invite them all. I mean, Dr. Mullins and I even talk, I joked around about it, I said, give me a list, let's just go knock on some doors and see what happens. So, I think that there's an opportunity to try to create a machine to reach out to the people that are already have their degrees and everything else, and then have them come back in. So, we had talked about that, that was just a suggestion. The other thing is, is that we're noticing that a lot of our actual openings, many of them are in Title I, and it's difficult, I will be honest with everybody, Title I is very difficult for individuals to be a part of. There are some people that do great, some people that don't, and it's a, it's a different kind of dynamic. I would like to see if we wanted to literally put together stipends for Title I teachers, and I know that that's kind of a shot across the bow, we didn't talk about it, Dr. Mullins, but one of the problems that we have is, is that as a teacher, I'll be honest with you, I've taught in three different schools, and there was one school that was particularly very easy compared to the other schools. I had less discipline, less issues, less, less need to teach the kids as much as I did, less follow-up from the kids, less, I mean, everything. There's a difference, right? And I think that there's that amount of extra work that goes into being a Title I sometimes, we may need to look at to honor that, move forward, because if we're going to run into a situation where we have vacancies at our Title I schools, we need to do something to honor the extra work. And if somebody wants to come to me and say, put together an argument that the Title I schools are actually working more, very easy to see when you look at the discipline differences and stuff like that. Also, one of the veins of my existence, Eastern Florida State College has a teacher program. They've gone out and applied for and received the opportunity to do one, I think it's like second grade or something like that, right? Just so everybody knows, every time we put together a program in the past, University of Central Florida has vetoed the program from being in existence. Let me explain how that works for everybody. We apply for a program, and it has to go to the state, there's a veto program that says we already have that. Now, it's needed, because there's a lot of colleges that just spring up and start offering programs, and then it dilutes the talent. But literally what happens, just so you know, is we're allowed to have the kids go through our program, but then they have to do their final year or two over at Eastern, over at University of Central Florida and do their internship. So, while they're over there, what do you think UCF's doing? They're plucking all our people. And I'll be honest with you, if I'm a young kid and I'm going over there, I'm a whole heck of a lot want to go to Orange County and party in Orange County and grow up there at a higher salary than here. We've got to break that. One of the things that I think I heard when I was speaking, it was at, I forget if it was at our School Board Association meeting or somewhere, one of the superintendents had said that they had polled all the people in their district, they said, out of, oh, it was a breakout session at the Florida School Board Association, this was amazing, was that they polled all, they looked at their data, and they said, how many of our teachers have graduated from our schools? And they got that number, and then they said, let's do an aggregate number of how long those people stay in our schools. It was off the chart. So, meaning that we may be able to take, you know, a handful of 25 teachers that come in from our Eastern Florida State College program, and it might seem like a little amount, but if they stay 20 years, that's like having 150 teachers that constantly are grinding, right? So, there's, and, and, Dr. Mullins, I'm not saying you haven't with Eastern Florida State, I just wanted my fellow board members to know the BS that goes on when we're trying to do this. I think this is a great point to try to say, let's open that throttle, I mean, we've got the applications, let's roll, right? That's all. And then, retention, I know this sounds like a broken record, but I traveled to Escambia County four years ago, five years ago, and sat with the, what was at the time Superintendent of the Year for the whole state of Florida, and one of the particular programs that he was highlighted on is his PAR program. Now, we do a mentor program that I was actually a part of when I was a teacher, and I will tell you, it looks good on paper, and there are about a quarter to a third of the teachers that really do it with effectiveness. And then there are other teachers that don't have the opportunity because of schedules and everything else to do that. The PAR program is a program that they set up because they're competing with Santa Rosa, because Santa Rosa County fights for their people, to literally give the opportunity for those teachers to have the development that they need, the professional development. They go before our committee, the committee says, here's what it is, they have a coach that comes in and they says, this is where I have need, and then they allocate the resources for it. It is the most phenomenal program in the world. Now, it costs them about $1.7 million to do, but when I talked to the Escambia County person, and I said, or the superintendent, who was phenomenal, and his HR and everybody else, we spent like three days there, he said that the amount of money that they lose in student achievement and retraining, which is about $30,000 a teacher, so every teacher we lose is between $22,000 and $36,000, depending on the position they're in, to train to be a teacher throughout the year of professional development. Think about how much money you lose when that happens, and how much student achievement you lose when you have poor teachers that are not being supported inside your classroom. And I'm not saying that our teachers are not supported, we have a program, and it's a lot better than some of the other programs we have, but if we want to be the best, this program was brought to our school district five years ago. The individuals that were in charge were not, I'll just say, were not ready for this program. I was very upset with them over some of the stuff that they were doing otherwise, and they didn't have their eyes on this. The PAR program works, comes from Harvard, Harvard Law, and it's across the nation. It's literally a teacher support, union members went, our staff went from the district. I truly believe this is something we need to look at, because this is not something that's going to go away. We're going to be in this cycle for about two or three years. This is something that we can have support for. All right. The other thing is, is, Dr. Mullins, do we have a survey of the resid, we were talking about doing a survey of the teachers that resign and retire, do we have that survey? Do we, what do we do in that result? What are we doing there?
We do, we have an exit survey. It is, it is not mandatory participation, but we do, we do capture that data, and it has grown, if you remember, I did present our, I think it was actually part of my evaluation, my self-assessment, our, the feedback we've received from those who are exiting, the, the number of people providing their feedback has grown exponentially in the last three years, as well as the positive response to Brevard Public Schools as a positive place to work, or something like that?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, had grown significantly from a 30% a few years ago to upwards of 80% today. So, short answer is yes, we do, sometimes it's difficult to get everybody to give them feedback.
Yeah, you're not going to give somebody that quit to do a survey, I get it. Like, I understand that, like, somebody may have had a bad situation.
I can get, I can get more feedback for you if you're interested.
Yeah, I'd like to see the results of that and then see, because one of the things that we're dealing with is, is that in the community and from some of the parents and teachers, we're hearing that discipline is what's driving our teachers' belief, that is the common theme that's out there, and it would be nice to know in a data-driven organization if that's actually the fact. So, knowing that 80% of them say that Brevard Public Schools is a great place to work, well then that's different than what we're hearing, which we all know, sometimes some things can be said, but they don't always, they're not always true. So, I think that exit survey's perfect for that piece, so if we can get that information, that'd be great. And then, we know that, and let's just be honest, conscious discipline is something that I've supported, right? It's something that is best practices, and Ms. Jenkins is right, it's been in our system forever. I think where a lot of my questions on conscious discipline is not the actual application, what that tree right there is everything a great teacher should do, and we should continue to do those practices without a doubt. I think where it is, is once a child is still having issues inside the classroom and interrupting the other kids inside that classroom, and what we do in that moment is where I think it gets confused with the other portions of what it is, because if you sat through that, that, I would argue, point to point, that everything that was inside that circle is beautiful teaching. The other piece is, is that that's where it is, and I think that that piece is being exacerbated because of what we're seeing from the COVID and everything else. So, our discipline, to be honest, has been higher, we've had more discipline problems than we've ever had. And the reason is, is, so what's happening is, is that people are saying it's conscious discipline that's creating this, right? But I truly believe it's not the conscious discipline beginning of teaching, I truly believe it's what we do right afterwards when we're trying to work with it. I was a teacher for nine years, I wrote five referrals in nine years, and that's because I practiced everything that's inside there. But when a kid broke that rule, I sent him, and it was, they were respectful. So, what I'm hearing from some of our teachers, Dr. Mullins, is that they're sending the kids down, and then they're being sent right back, right? May not be true, but that's what's happening, so I think that the argument is inside of that piece, and I would love to find out the information from the survey of resignations and retirements to tie that piece right there in to see if it's actually happening, because we know that our discipline numbers are up, we know that's happened, whether that's going to be because of COVID, whether it's going to be because of a couple of issues, but they're making the argument that right there, we are just allowing kids to continually perpetuate, and we're trying to work with them, and they just keep violating, and we're letting them go, right? That survey and some of those other things will help us feel out that, does that make sense? All right, and then I love your idea about the letter, Dr. Mullins, if, I mean, I would do it, I think the board members would do it also, I just think a letter of appreciation to all of our staff, if there's some way that we can do that, like, hey, I really appreciate you. I mean, I know making the argument that you're making all this money and everything, we care about you, but sometimes, and I'm guilty of it, my wife keeps telling me all the time, sometimes people just need you to listen, they don't need you to tell them stuff, they just need you to listen and tell them that you care. And I think sometimes we could do that. So, if you find a vehicle, Dr. Mullins, for us to do that, I would love to just say, care about you, BPS cares about you, and we're here, you know what I mean? And it might, you might get a thousand letters back saying, you don't care about me because, but, that's part of it. And then the last piece is, and I'm sorry, you talked a lot, so I'm going to take a little lot of time too. Two things, one, they've developed vapor sensors now that you can put inside of a bathroom that will tell you when one clicks, so you can put cheap vapor sensors, it's audio, and it's very distinct, you can check it. So, you can get vapor sensors and catch all the kids that are, right? Now, I know that it might be not something we want to do, but the cost is very low, I'll get you the information, I just found out about it two days ago. And then, last piece, Dr. Mullins.
The last one was.
No! Listen, I was a social studies teacher, I was not a math teacher, so if I say last one, we've got to keep going. All right. ALC, how do we provide not only the support for them through their mental guidance, but opportunities for them to not feel like they are ostracized from society, right? So, we're putting a basketball court, been like, for two years I've been trying to get that basketball court at the South, oh yeah, I know, I've been playing, I challenged Dr. Mullins to basketball court down there a couple of times, but here's the thing.
I keep declining.
I've asked Paul Gibbs, but he keeps saying no too, I figure I got a better height differential on him, but the thing is, is that, is that our children who are inside those ALCs are significantly wanting to be a part of something, right? Whether they're, I was one of those kids, I didn't go to an ALC, I didn't get expelled, but I could have, back then they didn't do half the stuff they do now, but I think if we give opportunities to those kids inside there, they will be better off. And I would, I would just say, Dr. Mullins, if there's a way, I know it's crazy at the ALCs right now, but I would love to have that basketball, I would love to offer opportunities to our kids in that regard, because it might help with their mental health and opportunities outside, job coaches, people from the community, your churches supporting, you know what I mean, like, kind of that ALC gets locked down and stuff. All right. And then, no, I'm just kidding you, okay, you don't have to look at me like that.
Ms. Belfort, may I make just two quick responses? Mr. Susan, two things I did want to respond to right away, your comments about Title I and recognition of service to our Title I schools, that is on our radar. So, I would echo your sentiments, and we're going to continue to walk that out, there is a process, so we'll keep the board apprised. Also want to reference Eastern Florida State College, since I've become superintendent, I have pursued that relationship on a, and a very good, have a very good relationship with President Ritchie, we talk regularly, but his former VP of Academics, Dr. Linda Minema, now Dr. Fletcher, we have a great rapport with them, Dr. Sullivan probably is engaged with, with Dr. Fletcher and the academic team, I don't know, weekly if not, maybe, if not monthly. I have said for years, if you can ever get a College of Education program, we will partner with you to make you the premier education training ground in the state.
In the country, in the world.
Sure.
Intergalactic.
And they are as committed to it as well, but to your point, they have been denied by the state to bring on a education program, but they just, maybe two years ago.
Yep.
Year ago, got the Elementary Science Ed Program. They just, maybe two years ago, year ago, got the elementary science ed program, but it's just so narrow and so, narrow focus that it's not meeting all of our needs. We're going to continue to pursue that. I know that they want it as well. I've literally written letters of support that go to their application to the state, and they continue to be denied.
I went as far, Doc-
That's probably as much as I can say about that right now. I don't want to, I don't want to speak disparagingly of other institutions.
I don't care, I will. I went, I went to UCF, and I called them out in the middle of a open forum, and I told them that that's garbage and not so nice of words. And, and I'm sorry, but our people need our students to stay in our schools. And dad gummit, you stop stealing our people and create a leverage point on us is BS. It's just BS. I say, we go, McDougal, you got, you only got a couple more months, let's go raise some havoc. Let's go yell at them. No? All right. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. You only got a couple more months, let's go cause some havoc. No? All right.
You know, be careful what you ask. That's all I can say. Dr. Mullins, thank you for this presentation and for all the work that went into it. And I want to talk about, because I think it's really, really important, I'm focusing on discipline, because the mentoring, I went online, and the mentoring program that we have for our parents to go through the modules is excellent. It gives you a clear picture of what's in takes, what you need, we support you. But I think what's really just as important is the parent's support that we're going to provide for our parents, because I think many of our parents are struggling themselves with discipline at their home. So, I do feel that we're focusing the right way, and I just want to say that conscious discipline, you and I visited, I can't remember what school we visited, but we saw it in action, because I asked questions, I wanted to see it, and I wanted to know it was done with fidelity. And how did the students respond? And it was an elementary school, and it was amazing, the camaraderie, and even when there was discourse, how they solved the problem, without anybody getting sent to the office, without anybody having fisticuffs, if they ever still use that.
Send them down.
You know? So, I feel this, it's a great program. I wish we could roll it out faster, as Ms. Moore and I always talk about. But it works, and that's what we want. Because right now, our kids, as you and I have talked, I've seen a lot of expulsions, and I saw them against expulsions. Expulsions don't solve problems for these children. It just sends them home, and not always got a good place to send them. So, anyhow, I'm very excited, I like the plan, and you certainly have my full support. Thank you.
I think I just heard Ms. McDougal commit that when she finishes her term on the board, she's coming back to help us with conscious discipline. Is that what you guys are?
We need mental health counselors, too. She can fill one of those positions. We'll just keep you around for a while.
I can do that.
Hey, do you hear that, Dr. Mullins?
I got it.
All righty. So, I have just a few questions, comments. First of all, thank you. Phenomenal information that you shared with us this morning. Been having lots of conversations around these issues and encouraging our community that we are certainly having these conversations internally, and we'll be coming forward with more information. So, thank you for putting that all together for us. Two questions that I know the answer to, but I just want to make sure that our public hears it. Are substitutes included in the $15 per hour?
Yes.
So, for all of our people out there that have been contemplating substituting, you are included in that raise to minimum wage beginning July 1?
Correct. And the other qualifications are bumped up as well, so it's not just the $15. Pardon?
Through ESSR.
Yes, through our ESSR, ESSR III funding, starting this year.
Okay. Super, thank you. And then, this one I know the answer to, too, but I just have to get it out there, because anytime we talk about these things, I, someone seems to ask the question, crossing guards are, just for clarification, are not employed by us, right? So, we don't set their salary. Can you just address that?
That's correct. They are not Brevard Public School employees. They are employed by either the county or their local municipality. We do not even contract crossing guard. They are provided as a service from the respective community. So, we have no control over their salary.
Thank you, thank you.
I do know, know that the county was looking at making significant raises to their own employee salaries, so I imagine they're going to give them therapy.
Yeah, just, just not something that we, as a board, have control over, so, because I hear that quite frequently, that you forgot the crossing guards again. And we don't forget them, we appreciate them immensely, but, but outside of our, our sphere of control on that one. Question, and feel free to get back to me later, but you mentioned the data that we have on our pilot classrooms for conscious discipline, a significant decrease in the behavioral issues that we're seeing in those classrooms. Have we cross-tabbed to academic outcomes for those classrooms? Do we have any that we have progress monitoring information or FSA information that we could also see if there is an impact to the academics? And like I said, you don't have to answer that now, but I just think it would be interesting to take a look.
Absolutely. I'll definitely get back with you. We have that for you and for the board.
Okay, awesome. And then, I think the last thing that I will say, and this is not, I mean, it kind of goes along with all of our retention things and, and, but more for our community, several of the schools are working very hard to plan, pre-planning for all of their team members to come back. Several of them are reaching out to community partners to provide breakfast, lunch, recognition. And so, I would encourage our community to reach out and connect with the school. I can assure you, they can all use some support with making sure that they welcome their teachers back with as much love as possible as we return to the new school year. And that may be, you know, little gifts, it may be food, it, there's, there's all sorts of things. But I would just encourage everyone, you know, pick, pick a school in your neighborhood, reach out and ask how you can help to ensure that everyone comes back to a great experience when we return. And I think that's all I have. Did anybody else have any questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. All right. We are, check in with the board. We are at 11:15. Does anyone need a restroom, restroom break? Okay, we're going to take a very quick, probably five-minute recess, and then we will resume with public comments.[1042.35]
We have three speakers.
Oh, is that it?
On agenda items.
I'm gonna call some people.
The circus is out of control, folks.
Sorry, sorry. We were talking about healthcare.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. All right, we're now at the public comment portion of the meeting on agenda items. We have three speakers, therefore each speaker will receive three minutes. Please note that the time is per speaker, not per agenda item. Topics not specific to agenda items will be moved to the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up. It's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. For the audience, please remember that outside of your personal public comment period, your role is as an observer. Therefore, I would ask that you please not disrupt the meeting by interjecting comments or noises during public comments. All right, our speakers are Katie Delaney, Anthony Calucci, and Sarah Mersky. If you all wouldn't mind getting on deck so we can move through. And Ms. Delaney, whenever you are ready.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm here to speak about many of the agenda items. The first one that I would like to speak on is D8, the superintendent report. One of the things that is troublesome to me is why are we not focusing on finding the best teachers? Why, it shouldn't matter what the color of somebody's skin is. As long as they are invested in the growth and education and well-being of our children, we want the most highly educated, highly, you know, enthusiastic people, gifted teachers, to be in that room. Regardless of their race. Another point that was made was that you guys are wanting parent involvement. I find that funny because we've been told that parents are a security risk. And that's how we've been treated for the past two years. Discipline is a major issue for the recruitment and retention of our teachers. And, like what Mr. Susan said earlier, what happens when those tactics don't work? These repeat offenders who continuously use this bad behavior are now disrupting a whole classroom of children. What about their education? The second point that I would like to speak on is the financial services. We need desperately a forensic audit on the budget. The budget does not give invoices, it does not give where our dollars and cents are going. The way that the budget is presented to the public needs to change. We need readily available every cent that's coming out of this building. The next thing that I'd like to comment on is H38. Which lawyers are expensive, I get that. $170,000 with a possible raise of $6,800 per year based on evaluations. That seems reasonable to me for a lawyer. But I would hope that our board is conscious of all the different lawsuits that have happened over the past couple of years. And honestly, the ones that will be coming, because there will be more coming. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Mr. Calucci?
My name is Anthony Calucci, I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. While I'm pleased to see the superintendent's presentation on recruitment and retention, I'm disappointed that this initiative may be too late to impact next school year. For years, our union has told this board, "We have a recruitment and retention issue." And most importantly, we've been focused on the fact that retention was the bigger issue. Now we're at a point of a crisis where there were 250 teacher vacancies posted yesterday, just weeks before school starts. We still have one school with over 20 vacancies, which begs the question, how do you open up a school with one-third of the positions not filled? Do you load up on class sizes? Do you pull our district resource teachers from the work they're supposed to be doing? Do you use school-based coaches to cover and deprive students of the services they're hired to provide to them? None of those are good options. Let me be frank, our union is disappointed in this board and the lack of action, even discussion about the issues that are impacting teachers. Meeting after meeting, there's a lot of discussion on issues that aren't important to us. And now you're seeing the result of that. And trying to address them now is perhaps too late. You're seeing the result of ignoring those who represent teachers and have been telling you about these issues. Instead, you abdicate your power to staff who are not properly addressing these issues. Have you dealt with poor administrative performance? Have you dealt with administrators who are just plain mean to their teachers and chase them out of BPS? Did you follow through on the student discipline issues I spoke about in November? Or did you leave it up to staff? And let's talk about the arbitration you've allowed your staff to get involved in. Are you okay, board members, with getting involved in an arbitration when anyone who can read can see that BPS is making the wrong decision? Are you okay with the fact that you spent taxpayers' hard-earned dollars to arbitrate the same exact case less than five years ago? And now you're going to waste more money because you lost and don't want to respect a neutral party's ruling? How can our teachers trust you when you can't be trusted to follow neutral parties' rulings? Former teachers on the board, would either of you think this was okay when you were a classroom teacher? Are you doing the work of a board member you wanted to accomplish when you ran for office? Or is this the same nonsense you would have been furious about as teachers? Are any of you really focused on your jobs right now? School board members, wake up. You're asleep at the wall and you let someone else drive the car and the car is driving into a brick wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Ms. Mersky?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife, mother, taxpayer, registered voter in Brevard County, constituent in School Board District 2. And I also have two children who are in Brevard Public Schools. I hope everyone is having a great summer and looking forward to a wonderful 4th of July celebration. Today, I want to address Agenda Item C40, the Loving Guidance Training. Traditionally, this program has been a positive training tool for teachers and students. However, this particular SEL training that Brevard Public Schools has chosen has become agenda-driven. And, you know, me going into the mental health field and most mental health clinicians keep our politics and our agenda out of mental health situation. It's only about how to truly help the person or the students. I understand that the district has to spend money on this due to it being earmarked. However, there were no bids on this contract. It's a bit silly to me that the district is spending about $170,000 to go to Oviedo, Florida. Also, any suicide prevention should be under a licensed mental health professional. So I have major concerns with all this suicide prevention not being guided under licensed mental health professionals. And those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comments on agenda items. We thank you for your willingness to address us. And that will move us into our consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 22 agenda items under the consent category.
Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
Moved by-
No, I got it, I got this one.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Now we are at the public hearing portion of this agenda. First is to hold a hearing and approve item G33. Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 3315, Student, Staff, and Wellness? Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 3315, Student, Staff, and Wellness? Do I hear, oh, any board member wish to address the policy? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Ms. McDougall to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next is to hold a hearing and approve item G34. Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 8510 Wellness? Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Policy 8510 Wellness? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next, to hold a hearing and approve item G35. Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 5121, Controlled Open Enrollment? Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 5121, Controlled Open Enrollment? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. I got it. I was ahead of her. No, I got it. No, you took too long to say it.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it then.
See?
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next is to hold a hearing and approve item G36. Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities? Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 7250, Commemoration of School Facilities? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next is to hold a hearing and approve item G37. Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 7110, Student Accommodation? Is there anyone present to address the board regarding Board Policy 7110, Student Accommodation? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. McDougall.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. And that concludes today's public hearings. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about items under the action portion of today's agenda?
Yes, members of the board. First item is H38, General Counsel Employment Agreement.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve, second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Next item is H39, oh, Dr. Mullins?
You got it. Department School Initiated Agreements.
I'll entertain a motion.
Missed my opportunity.
We were congratulating Mr. Gibbs for keeping his job.
Sorry, I was, and I was trying to say I should have said no, because he says no to everything on me. So I should have just said no.
Good point.
Then it would have been bad. I'll say I'll find a way.
I have a motion by Ms. McDougall and a second by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next item is H40, Procurement Solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, just wanted to touch base. I've had a lot of conversation, because conscious discipline is one of those things that keeps circling back as controversial. Had lots of discussions with teachers, with Dr. Mullins, Dr., actually, I didn't have it with Dr. Thady, I had it with Ms. Klein and Ms. Moore around this. And thank you, Dr. Mullins, for presenting the feedback from our principals that have already actively engaged in this. I think, you know, I just wanted to make clarification, because sometimes, you know, the interesting thing about public comment is, you know, you can't say ugly words and you can't call us out, but you can stand up there and give misinformation. And I think that was given today, because this is not $170,000 for people to go to Oviedo. If you look at the contract, it actually says it's for training, for follow-up. It's for a whole year's worth, if not more. When's it end? Right, through May of next year. It's worth a whole year's worth of coaching, virtual check-ins, and all of that. So I just wanted to clarify that, because that's a pretty big misrepresentation of the use of these funds. So, but, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
And the last item is H41, Naming of Titusville High School Gymnasium.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion?
Heck yeah. Anybody read this?
Yeah.
She's pretty amazing. Like, if you guys don't get an opportunity to read anything on the agenda, because I know it's pretty boring sometimes, this is amazing. And I think her contribution to our school district and what she did for women and pioneered as a coach is simply amazing. I just want to say that, because I didn't want to skip over it, that's all. She's freaking awesome, so.
Yeah.
I said freaking, gonna get a couple emails.
You are gonna get emails about that. Thank you, Mr. Susan, absolutely. And I, you know, the group that was working on this reached out to me for a letter of support on it. And I had to tell them no, because I felt like I couldn't get in front of board discussion on the item and that it would just-
Why not? Just throw it out there.
Well, because, I know, but then I would be basically saying how I'm going to be voting on this issue. And I try to avoid those conflicts as much as humanly possible, so.
I do it all the time.
I know you do, Mr. Susan. But no, I'm very happy to see this come to fruition and this awesome recognition. So, thank you for what I'm assuming is going to be support.
So what is this gonna look like? A big sign? Are we gonna do a big video on it? I mean, this is a big deal. Come on, Dr. Mullins, let's do it right.
I will look into it and get back to you.
I mean, this is, I mean, honestly.
I heard-
Well, I know the community, the Titusville community is doing a lot to move forward and celebrate and recognize Coach Dixon, so. Stay tuned.
Maybe challenge her to a basketball game.
I heard that you were wearing the Terrier costume on the roof that day of the celebration, Mr. Susan?
What are you talking about?
That's what I heard.
Ah, I didn't know they had one.
Oh, yeah, the bulldog?
A little, it's a, isn't it a terrier?
It's a terrier.
It's a terrier.
It's a terrier, but it's a bulldog-looking type terrier.
Okay, we'll see, we'll talk about it. I like, I mean, you know, I'm all for the kids. Last time I put it on, the mascot head, it didn't turn out so well for them, so. I will try to do it again and support the kids in any way I can.
The minute you make the difference, Mr. Susan.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. All right, do any other board members have information to report or discuss?
Oh, come on, McDougall, you only got a couple months left. I gotta use as much as possible. All right, so, one of the things that, when I was thinking about what the superintendent said on the students that were inside that had homegrown from our community, I was thinking maybe we do the same thing in some sort of way, right? So if we have people that were born here, raised here, went to Brevard schools, and are now teaching in our schools, wouldn't it be cool to say, "Thank you for being here, thank you for being a part of our community," right? All right, I don't know, do you guys feel that way? Yeah, okay. The other thing is, is that, one of the things is in our health plan, we had spoken about the costs and stuff like that. One of the things I would like to try to find out from you guys, if you would like to see, is, I would like to figure out if people who have dependents on our health plan also have more years of service with the school district. And I'll tell you why. When my father was a, he's an electrical contractor and a general contractor. And when he hires people, he specifically looks, and I know this is kind of, shouldn't probably say this, but he specifically looks at the difference between somebody who has a family and somebody who doesn't, because he's convinced that the people who have a family will stick it out and be there for you longer. I would like to see if the dependent, people who have dependents on our plan, which isn't a huge indicator, are also have a higher number of service than people who don't. Just a survey, because then it would help us determine how we target our healthcare stuff in the future. If staff can pull it, would we be interested in getting it?
On that note, I'd like to give a PSYAC update.
Wait, 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 let's just stay, no, I need input! I need input, like, you can just try to do that, I don't know what you're doing. Do you guys have, would you like to ask staff to find that out? I mean, I can make a public back, but I thought it'd be a cool thing to find out. I'm trying to block Dr. Mullins from looking at you guys at all.
Yeah. I'm not opposed, the only thing I would say is, you know, I- So I'm thinking through the question that you're asking, and it would seem to me that the people who have been in the district the longest, many of their dependents may have-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Of the health plan.
No, I thought about that, thought about that.
I'm not opposed to looking at the data, obviously. My only concern is how cumbersome is it going to be for staff to have to pull that data, like, is it-
It could be identifying factors of birthday, address, it could be pretty, too Excel field. But I just didn't know if you guys were interested in doing it. That anomaly that you said is where I was at with making this request. But I'll be honest with you, I'm looking at what, when I talk about retention and recruitment, what particular person we're looking for to retain and recruit, and making sure that all of our policies and revenue sources and everything else pertain to that. So in doing so, that's where my head was at. That's all.
Yeah, that makes sense. I would hate to take up an enormous amount of staff time for it, but if Dr. Mullins feels like it can be done relatively easily, then I would-
Give me the opportunity to, that's all, yeah.
Yeah. So, I feel like it's a, I feel like it's a good assumption that that's accurate. I just don't, I don't understand the benefit of using staff time to get that information, because what are we gonna do with that information? We can't discriminate against an applicant whether or not they have a family or not. I think it's, I think it's good information, I think it makes sense. I just don't, I don't really understand how we would utilize it. So that, before, like, supporting staff to take time to do it, I would want to know what would be the benefit of that data.
Absolutely. So part of the data that we're looking at is, is whether we increase the costs on families for healthcare costs. This would be an opportunity for us to say, "You know what? Like, maybe these are people in the future. What we're doing now has already been set in stone. But in the future, we need to attract families." And then that also, just, you know, great question, Ms. Jenkins, also what we can do is, is part of our PRs and part of our push and everything else, it might not be that we spend a ton of money trying to go get kids out of college. It might be that we look at post-secondary more often. It might be that we look at post-secondary more often. Maybe we're spending time. So, looking at the individual, who it is that will give us the most years of service with the strongest back, I think that that was part of it, that's all. And I think also, that's why I was going with the other request of, who's homegrown? Who do we have, right? So let's start identifying, that's all.
So I appreciate that. And, you know, with discussions we've had about healthcare as a board, you know, Mr. Susan, that you and I are on the same page when it comes to that conversation, so that's why I wanted...
Can you say that again? Can you say that last part again?
Yeah, we're on the same page.
I'm just, I just wanted to hear it one time.
It's rare, but it's true. But I, I just wanted to hear what the purpose of it was, if it was for that reason, because I, I, I'm with you. I think it's an important conversation to have in order to retain those, those family members, so thank you.
Russ, you need a press conference on that one? We both agreed on something. All right.
I did want to give you guys an update on PSYAC. We met this last Wednesday and got some really great data back specifically on Hinge Health and on Surgery Plus. And it does look like we are realizing already significant savings. Actually, I believe, Dr. Thede, above what they originally had projected, is that correct? For this first year, that we're really just finishing up the first year with Surgery Plus. And the data they gave us was only through April, so, or May. So, that was fantastic, Hinge Health. So there's a couple of things that are really positive. One, the savings, two, the healthcare plan, which benefits all of us, not just all of us who are on the plan, but all, every employee, because, you know, the less we have to spend on healthcare, the more we have available for salaries and, and things like that. So, but the other part of that is that we're getting people, our employees, healthier, because maybe they were putting things off, physical therapy because of scheduling and whatever. And, and as Dr. Mullins already alluded to, Hinge Health is something that you can do from home. And the same thing with Surgery Plus. Maybe they're putting it off because, yes, you know, they can, most of it could be covered through insurance, but there's still usually the deductible you have to meet and Surgery Plus, because it's zero cost to the employee. More people are, are taking those steps to get that care. And so, it's at lower cost to them, because, you know, zero cost to them, it's at lower cost to our plan. Also, we're getting healthier employees. And so, seen some really great outcomes, and I think that PSYAC definitely could see that these are the, these are the right ways to go. And I'm looking forward to seeing that continue at the number one. If they, one thing that's very helpful to us in our decision-making is, they, they ask the people who take advantage of those services, "How did you hear about it? Or what was your path to using it?" And the number one way is word of mouth. So, we're sending out email, Antonio is so good at sending, but people need to, it's, it's the end user. It's just like on Amazon, you want to go to the comments and you filter out the people who are, you know, you can tell are kind of crazy. But, you know, the people who seem to be sane, you know, like, oh, look, they liked it, and so it must be good. So really, that end user is who we're, so, that's so important. So, you know, I just encourage our employees, if you're listening and you're thinking about taking care of yourself in those ways you've been putting stuff off, please take a look at that and find someone in your building who, who's used it. Because you're probably, with the number of people who have used it, you're probably gonna find somebody in your building. And, and just take a look at it, because it's really, that made a big difference. We don't have a lot of the data from Hello Heart yet, because it just launched, but they are gonna be giving us that update in July. So when they do, I'll, I'll report back to you guys how the first few months have gone.
Ms. Campbell, can I ask a quick question? You were just promoting the idea that we go to the school and we go around and try to find people with surgeries and say, hey, you need it?
No, no!
Because I'll do it. Like, I'm just trying to find out, Ms. Campbell, like, what was that? It was that we're gonna go find them? Like, I see the guy that's hunched over and I say, hey, Surgery Plus!
No, you know what? Maybe they, somebody stands up and pre-planning goes, "I want to tell you guys, I used Surgery Plus over the summer, and this is, this is how it worked for me." And, you know, people realize it's not, it's not, it's not a come-on, it's not a gimmick. It's, it's really, it's high-quality doctors. They're walking you through step by step through the process, which is, which is more hand-holding than you usually get in a normal, you know, walk-to-surgery process. And, and in addition, zero cost.
I think we should actually use it. Need a back surgery, go to work for Brevard Public Schools, because you get it for free. I think it's a sell point.
I think we're going a little too far there, maybe. Just want to let you guys know, the programs we've implemented are going well. And they're saving everybody money.
Well, and, and I would share, Ms. Campbell, it's funny that you say during pre-planning, somebody might stand up and say, "I use Surgery Plus." I just talked to Dr. Mullins this morning. You know, we've been really talking about the importance of educating our folks about the ways that they can more efficiently use our health plan. And I just talked to Dr. Mullins this morning about perhaps looking at some opportunity during pre-planning to really take some time to educate people on how the choices that they make impact the dollars that are available, even down to like the pharmacy you choose and using Surgery Plus and, and those types of things. And I will just say, as, as Dr. Mullins alluded to earlier, we, we just finished up my son's surgery, three weeks ago, maybe, and dealt with Surgery Plus through the entire thing. Not only have I not paid anything out of pocket, and he had phenomenal care, but they also, because the, there was not a surgeon on the north end of the county that was part of Surgery Plus, they also gave him a debit card that they put money on for gas and food for when he had to travel down to Melbourne. Yeah. So, I mean, it's, not only, you know, and, and like I said, the care was phenomenal, the doctor had a phenomenal reputation. And so I, I highly encourage. And one of the things that I found, and I don't know if there's a way that, for this to be addressed, or if it's just a matter of educating our people to ask the question, my pediatrician is the one that referred us to the orthopedic surgeon. And when they referred me, they referred me to, I want to say Jewett over in Lake Mary or something like that. And so, but I called Cigna, and I said, "Hey, my son's gotten a referral to an orthopedic surgeon. I don't know, do I talk to, do I go ahead and see the orthopedic surgeon I was referred to? Do I talk to you first? How, how does this process work?" And they said, "No, no, no, we prefer that you talk to us first and let's see if we can get him in with an orthopedic that is part of Surgery Plus." But it took...
Oh, wow. So Cigna was...
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So what they...
They should do it every time.
Yeah.
A referral should hit Cigna, Cigna should call the person and say...
Right, so I made the call.
But we should do the other way.
And then I called Surgery Plus and said, you know, this is, this is what's going on. And so, it's, it's not seamless, you know what I mean? Had I not taken that step and known about Surgery Plus, then I would not have been...
But that exists in other cases. So, Dr. Thede, I don't know if you hear the board, but having Cigna get the referral in would make the phone call to the individual and say, "Did you know that Surgery Plus is available and you can go here?" is a huge savings point to hit. You hit it right there. That is, that does go on in other ones, so, just an idea, Dr. Thede.
But one of the things you said a little bit ago about people standing up, I mean, that, that's been a recurring theme on, on PSYAC is, you know, it's one thing for district staff, or for the principal, whoever the health benefits representative is, is to stand up and say it. But when, when people are telling their peers, again, it's the end user, hey, this is, this is all it's cracked up to be. That's really gonna make a difference. And ultimately, you know, we want to save all of our employees' money, but we also need a healthy workforce. And so, these, these decisions and all the wellness activities, this is, this is essential. And because it keeps people at work healthy, more productive, you know, able to walk around and without pain and, and all that worry and all that stuff. So, I, when they, they did a little map, talking about availability of doctors, and one of the concerns when we first started was, are there gonna be enough doctors in our area to take care of this? Because they do do the gas cars, are they gonna send everybody? And they did a little map of where all the services have been, and, and they are predominantly in the county. So very few people were having to travel outside. So I think that network is, has been useful for the people who are taking advantage of it. And of course, Hinge Health, you can do from anywhere. So, that's great.
We did Hinge Health, too, so, trying to avoid the surgery. We did Hinge Health and then ended up having to have the surgery anyway, but it was a, you know, it, it could have ideally been cost avoidance, had we not gotten to that point, so...
It's good stuff.
Yeah, definitely good stuff. Absolutely. Anybody else have anything else for board discussion? No? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to add?
Well, just a follow-up to Mr. Susan's request. I would appreciate the opportunity to confer with staff to understand, first, the request. I, we may need some clarification, and then I'll provide the board an update on what the pathway is to provide what, sometimes the suggestion of it's easy to pull is not always as easy to pull.
Oh, come on.
But we, we will, we will give it a good college try.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. All right, we are now going to hear the remaining speakers who signed up to comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. We'll hear from the speakers in the order in which they signed up, including those who are not waiting outside today. As stated earlier, reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. Should audience participation interfere with speakers being heard or hearing me, I'll be forced to clear the room. And I anticipate that being an issue today. It's a fairly small crowd. When I call your name, please line up along the east wall of the boardroom to facilitate the smooth transition of speakers. And we only have four, so I'm just gonna go ahead and call all four of you. Katie Delaney, Savannah Carnes, and David Carnes, and then Sarah Mersky. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing.
I would like to speak about the, I, I call it the circle of discipline that I've been hearing about from teachers across the district. Basically, when a student gets, needs to be disciplined, they go to the office. A lot of times, they come back from the office with candy, or in one instance, I heard two ice creams. Basically, what I'm hearing is, is from the district, they're being told, "No, because of risk ratio, we're not able to discipline this child the same way." And if people don't know what risk ratio is, basically, discipline is being determined based upon IEP's 504s race, not the, the bad behavior that the child showed. I'm asking for the board to partner with the community, who is going to ask the state legislature and the Board of Education to get rid of risk ratio, because it's only hurting our children, it's not helping them. They need standards, they need a level of expectation that this is how we behave in a classroom. We need to support our teachers, we need to support our administration. The next thing is the budget. Again, I'm going to beg this board to, to change the way that they show the public the budget. Even some of you have mentioned that when you get the budget, it doesn't tell you anything, you know? So, we, the taxpayers deserve to know how, how our money is spent. And when we're not seeing invoices, we don't know that. And lastly, in a couple days, it'll be July first. In, in a couple days, a few laws will be going into effect. And our school district will be in violation of some of the books that we are having, that we have in our libraries and our bathroom situation that's going on, plus the LGBT guidelines. Number seven will be in violation of the new law. And so it is once again opening up our district to more and more litigation. And I am begging you guys to please fix these problems so that we are not wasting money on lawyer fees. We don't need all this litigation, but what are parents supposed to do? That's, because you guys aren't being our representatives, we have no other outlet. So I'm, I am begging you to please deal with this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Ms. Carnes?
That's fine.
Good morning. We're here to address the situation in Ocean Breeze Elementary. All of you should be aware of it from our numerous emails and certified letters. Ms. Jenkins, I watched your video from the March for Our Lives rally posted on June eleventh. And it's several times you ask about your rights as a parent to protect your child. It's fitting today, as a follow-up to Dr. Mullins' discussion, that so many concerns were expressed about disciplinary problems at our schools. Imagine our frustration as we send our son, sent our son off to school where we knew he was gonna be bullied, with the full knowledge of the school board and Dr. Mullins. Each and every one of you knew about this. We know these incidences are well documented, including in writing and video. As all of you know, we've been through this with you many, many times. We've received almost no response from anybody. We've had our, we, this bullying started at the beginning of August twenty twenty-one and continued until January twenty twenty-two, when we were forced to move our son from our local school. You know Ms. Mashad never attempted to protect our son, only ever protected the bully. A complete lack of discipline, area action for this child is documented. She started a campaign of harassment and retaliation against our son, including having the entire OBE staff watch our child for anything she could use against him. Again, Ms. Jenkins, I heard you say school safety was the highest priority. You chastised other politicians for not attending. But today, I look at another group of politicians that aren't doing anything. So here, I'm here to ask you, the superintendent and the rest of the school board members to finally take matters seriously. You know our story, the horrors Ms. Mashad put us through. Once our story got out in the community, others started to tell us their horror stories of bullying and abuse and Ms. Mashad's attempt at violence as well.
I'm, I'm stopping your time, so I'm not taking time away from you, okay? But I just, I do need to address something. We have a policy that we don't address people individually, either board members or throw out staff members' names, primarily because they're not here to be able to respond to what's taking place. So if you could just remove the, the individual names from your comments for the remainder of your time, okay?
One moment. The principals attempt to silence them as well. Dr. Mullins, you're responsible for hiring Ms. Mashad.
Sir?
Or the principal.
Or Dr. Mullins, please.
I'm sorry?
Or Dr., so no, no individual names. You can speak to everything, should be directed to me as the board chair or the board as a whole, or all of us, is perfectly appropriate. Thank you.
The superintendent is responsible for hiring Ms. Mashad, or the principal. Her failures in Connecticut have followed her here, given that all, you know, problems. What have you done? Board members, you're responsible for hiring the superintendent. Have you personally followed up to see what's happened? Has an investigation been led into this matter? Have you given the personal attention to this matter? Or are you more concerned about school retention?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Carnes, you want to give it another try, or you want me to have Ms. Mersky?
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Del...
Take your time.
Okay. Gun control and the school safety is on top of parents' minds. And according to the school board, is on top of their mind as well. But unfortunately, in my... In my experience... I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. In my experience, these words have no alignment with the actions. Here's a quote directly from an incident report made in Ocean Breeze investigating bullying by another, an other student towards my son. The other student reported, said, "I said I'm going to hurt, shoot, and kill his mom and his sister." My son was truly scared and turned to the adults in church for help. This trip was no one-time incident with a specific student towards my son. These students harassed my son for months, pleading to bring a gun and kill my son. My daughter, who also attends Ocean, Ocean Breeze's school, and even me. The school had to be locked down at least one because the same student claimed to have a gun in his backpack. There is an even security bell inside the school for this student attempt to punch my kid. I cannot tell you how disappointed I am that this incident and the entire situation was brought directly to the principal, no name, and the school board. In fact, in response to my pursuing this issue, my son, who previously had no records of behavior or bullying, was targeted and harassed by the school administration. After ten days of my son, after ten days, my pursuit of this mother, mass this mother, the principal personally had students fear reports against my son, and I have proof of that. I have the papers with me. It is sad state of affair when we tell our kids that this kind of treat will not be tolerated and that the adult... tolerated and that the adults in charge will handle this issue. Our kids see those in charge turn on of reporting and pursuing such matters. What measures of, does this behavior send to our children? What measure that it sends to other parents? In this instance, I decided to pull my children out from the school they have been since kindergarten. I moved them to another school. In response of my correspondence, Ms., the superintendent did wish us luck at our new school, but as far I know, did nothing to address the issue that Ocean Breeze or take actions to allow us to feel safe staying in our home school. We are leaving, and my understanding was at the point that the school board believed there was no longer an issue what, about other kids in class. Can I finish?
I can't allow you to finish. I'm sorry, but if there's anything you would like to leave with us, you're certainly welcome to do so, if there's additional comments.
I just want to finish one point. Can I?
I already let you go over your time, and I, I just, I have to be consistent, but absolutely, if there's anything that you would like to leave, or if you'd like to follow up after the meeting, we'd be happy to do so, okay?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Marskey. I'm a wife, mother, constituent. I live in District 2 for school board, and I have two children in, uh, Brevard Public Schools. I do want to recognize what an amazing program the Summer Enrichment Program has been. My children enjoyed it. I want to address some concerns that were brought up today in presentations, um, specifically the vaping and drug concern amongst the students.